Everybody hear me?
Yep. Good evening. Welcome to the Marion City Council Workshop for the month of September, albeit in a virtual setting yet again. We're going to begin with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Haynes, if you would do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Let the records reflect that everyone is present and accounted for, if I'm not mistaken. We will begin with review of the minutes. This is from the August 5th and August 10th meetings, workshop and regular meeting. Is there any discussion on the minutes as they are presented to us this evening? All right, everyone seems satisfied. They will be up for approval on Monday evening. Next, I'll ask if the council has any conflicts of interest on anything appearing on the agenda this evening.
Yes.
Everyone is good? Great. We're just gonna move right into our resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Looking for adoption on Monday evening. We have ordinance 06-2020. This is budget amendment number three. And I'm going to kick it over to City Manager Jim Weeprek to guide us through.
Okay, as we discussed last month, we're pretty much adjusting for capital projects that we didn't spend the money on as expected and the delays for the police cruisers that were hoped that we wanted to be delivered in FY20 that are not going to be here until the current year, until FY21. So everything nets out, as you see. Hopefully, that's a good kind of recap on it, since we spent some time on this last month. If anybody has questions, I can certainly answer anything that you all might want to know.
Very good. Any questions from the council on the budget amendment as it's presented? All right, everyone seems satisfied with that. That will be up for adoption on Monday evening. Next, we have our monthly water allocation. This one for September of 2020, resolution 2020-10, as you'll find in your packets. Any discussion regarding the water allocation? All right, everyone is good. While we're on this topic of water, I do want to ask regarding the voluntary restrictions we put in place of Phase One. To me, from my untrained eye, it does not look like they've improved a whole lot. Are we going to continue with Phase One, Mr. Weeprek?
Yes, we believe we're okay with keeping the restrictions as voluntary. The well levels are holding steady. If you scroll down to the Public Works report, you'll see a little variation, but all in all, they're holding steady. And Public Works' recommendation was to stay with the voluntary water restrictions at this point.
Very good. So they're holding steady, but they're holding steady at a lower depth than we want them to be. Is that correct?
Slightly lower. Not dangerously low, but kind of seasonally low, since we have had a dry summer all in all. And when we do get rain events at this time of year, the vegetation sucks up most of that. A lot of it does not make it down to the aquifer. So this time of year, even if we started having, you know, rain every couple of days, it's going to take a long while for that to actually reach the aquifer, because the plant uptake doesn't leave much to trickle down to the aquifers.
Very good. Any questions or objections from the council on maintaining Phase One voluntary restrictions?
With respect, Mr. Mayor, to the voluntary water conservation, can I ask the City Manager, at what point would a, I mean, I guess at what level would it become necessary for it to become mandatory?
I can get some more details on that for Monday evening. I don't know the specific well depth, but at any of the wells that we would really be concerned, on the chart that's included in your Public Works report, you'll see that the level of the pumps is indicated on those water depth charts as well. So you can see that generally, our biggest producing wells have a long way to go before we get close to the level where the pumps are set. But as long as we don't see a rapid, rapid decline in the well level, that I think that's what we'd be looking forward to take things up to the next step, if we see a big drop in one or two of the big producers.
Okay, and this is monitored regularly. If between now and the next council meeting, city staff finds, you know, a need to go more strict or to ease them, I do want to make that, take that opportunity as soon as possible. That way, we can lift the restrictions if that's the case. So, you know, on a week-by-week basis, you know, the staff is in touch with me and letting me know how things are going. But very good. That's all I had on the water side of things. I appreciate it very much. Any other questions from council while we're on the water allocation? Everyone's satisfied with such. That will be up for adoption on Monday evening. Moving into our City Manager report, Mr. Weeprek, it is back to you again.
Okay, we have a meeting coming up regarding the Sewell annexation that's scheduled for September 17th. We did have some some discussion at our last Planning Commission meeting with regard to a planned street that's on the comprehensive plan. On our 2010 comprehensive plan, as has been the case since at least, I guess, the prior 20 years, we have planned streets, including the completion of Antrim Boulevard, which would go from the roundabout, as it exists now, across Trevannian Road around the south side of the city and meeting back up with Route 140 approximately west of Flowserve on Tony Town Pike at the western edge of town. Also on the comprehensive plan, from that same intersecting point is another planned street that goes across part of the Harner Farm that's outside of the city and the Sewell property, also currently outside of the city, crossing over Fringer Road and ultimately, I'm sorry, crossing over Harney Road and ultimately tying into Fringer Road on the north side of the city. So it's essentially three quarters of a Beltway around the city. The developer and builder has presented a concept that incorporates a street that does cross the Sewell property in basically the correct fashion to match up to the line on the map on the comprehensive plan. But we need to delve into that a little bit more as to how that street would function, whether it would be something more like a Kenan Street that serves kind of like a residential collector's street, or if it would be something more akin to Antrim Boulevard and the planned extension of Antrim Boulevard. So we have some more discussion coming up with the Planning Commission on that. And but at any rate, the current plan for the Sewell property does recognize that street and incorporate it into the design. But of course, the nature of that street is going to be a big factor. So again, more to come on that. So let's see, that's about it on the Sewell annexation. We should have some more next month after we have this meeting on the 17th. The Roberts Mill-run Stormwater Pond and the O'Brien Avenue Bridge, aside from landscaping, it's completed. Landscaping is scheduled for this fall. There's going to be some aquatic plants below the standing waterline and some additional planting just above what typically will be the waterline. Now, in rain events or following rain events, of course, the water level is going to rise and inundate the plantings, but they're obviously specified to be able to withstand that. But the idea is also that we're going to have a little bit of a vegetative buffer around the wet pool part of the pond. So that'll be coming in the fall. I don't believe it's gone, I don't think a bid has been awarded from the county yet for the landscaping, but we'll have a little more on that next month. City Hall flooring is in, made a world of difference in the appearance of the building now that we've got carpet and tile again, instead of concrete every place. The Fire Marshal was here today for his inspection and we got through that okay, except we neglected to turn power back on in two of the offices upstairs. So the ladies were, you know, how much longer is it going to be? And meanwhile, the Fire Marshal was long gone before I heard that they were still out of power, because we had to kill the power to the building to test everything out for the alarms and emergency systems and everything. So with the Fire Marshal having been here, now we can get the Carroll County Inspector back in. So hopefully, we will get through that tomorrow and we'll have permission to use the, basically, the majority of the ground floor. Everything but the lobby is finished now. So we are waiting for the lockset for the lobby door to be shipped. And we are also waiting for the correct glass panels for the entry, the entryway to be shipped. Three of the four should be in within the next week. Unfortunately, the spandrel glass that will go in the actual door leaf, the active door leaf, is going to be next month before that arrives. So we may end up reopening the lobby without the complete facade being done, but functionally, it will be operable. And I don't think that will hold us up from any final inspection or use and occupancy. So the contractor's been having a very difficult time getting getting some of the entryway parts shipped and in place. And, you know, granted, this is a one-off kind of custom doorway, but it has proven to be very challenging to get everything coordinated and get all the components for that doorway made. So hopefully, tomorrow, we will have some good news and we'll start moving people back downstairs and putting people in their correct places. Still waiting for some furniture to be delivered for the finance office, but it's getting very close. So hopefully, by next month, everything will be back to normal operation and we'll be able to have everybody back together finally. So it's been a long time for the finance department to be operating with, you know, two here and two down at the police station. So I know they're looking forward to getting back together. And I'm sure that the chief is looking forward to getting his space back as well. So so that's about it on City Hall. Trevannian Terrace plans were delivered this morning, hand-carried in for the Stormwater retrofit project. So they're here for signature and the county will be going out to bid on those shortly. And that's about it. We're, it seems like every time I put pen to paper for something for COVID-19, as far as a policy on mask-wearing or distancing, we get some other tidbit thrown in the mix. We were planning, I was planning to require doctor's notes to be presented before someone could return from work. And Clara forwarded me a piece of information from, I believe, the Department of Labor that talked about requiring such a note could exacerbate the spread of the virus and put undue pressure on the healthcare professionals by making people go see their doctors when they may not really need to. So it seems like it's, things are changing as we learn more about it. And so we're, so far, we're just kind of rolling with it the best we can. We have seen, I have seen folks taking the wearing of masks in city buildings a lot more seriously in recent weeks. So I think that's a plus. That basically, our policy is when you're leaving your workstation, you mask up. When you can't be six feet away from somebody, you mask up, but you don't have to wear a mask in your own office or at your own workstation. And, you know, folks seem to be adhering to that. And I'm seeing a lot more mask usage than, say, a month ago. So we're rolling with it and hopefully, we won't have any incidents going forward, keeping our fingers crossed. And that's about it. So if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Are there any questions from the council on the City Manager report? All right, hearing none. Are there any questions on departmental reports? Before I hand it off, I do want to share, obviously, as everyone is aware, Nancy McCormick has now retired. She was honored. And I'm going to see if I can bring up the correct thing here. Stand by if you would. Got about three dozen windows open right now. Very good. Does everyone see what I've put on the screen there? No? All right. All right, do you see the screen with the proclamation on it? All right, very good. I couldn't see you, so I was waiting for audible. That's okay. Now I see you. This proclamation was presented to Nancy McCormick from the Carroll County Commissioners. You see on the screen there, she was present in the virtual meeting where they did declare a Nancy McCormick Day. It's very exciting and well-deserved for her, for all the hard work and many years she put into the city of Tony Town. Also want to thank Mayor Portem Foster for putting on a great virtual going-away ceremony for Nancy. That was a great event, had a lot of amazing people from around the state and the county kind of sending her off. Not really a farewell. We know she's still going to be around. But I do just want to point out the county's recognition of her and making a Nancy McCormick Day. I myself prepared a proclamation that I left at home on my desk, because I was rushing out the door too quickly. So unfortunately, that is not here. I am going to see if I can successfully stop sharing this. And I did. Technology's working this evening. That reminds me, I do want to say thank you to our IT department for improving the internet here in the City Council chambers. Things are going much more smoothly with that. Are there any questions from the council on departmental reports in your packets? Everyone is satisfied? Excellent. I will now go to our part-time Floridian, Mr. Gallow, for his legal report.
Thank you, everybody. I hope you're having a good night. I have a couple of things. It's been a busy month. The first thing I want to talk to you about is follow-up with the City Manager talked about, which was the Trevannian Terrace project. Before COVID hit, we were in a position to file an order with the court for the court to grant the city the ownership of that parcel. You recall the back history where we bought it at tax sale and had followed the necessary procedures to do the lawsuit. And so that was where we left it. And then the court shut down with the order sitting on the judge's desk. Unfortunately, part of the restart has a phased reopening for the court. And one of the phase reopenings is foreclosure of right of redemptions on tax sales, which is what we're doing. So that has just recently been lifted. And so we need to see where we are in the queue and jump-start it. I'm hopeful this is not going to hold up the project that the City Manager talked about, but the order hasn't been signed. And, you know, so there's only so much we can do. But we're going to push on that. So that's the status on that. The Tony Town Crossing Project, we talk about it every month. We don't have to talk about it anymore, because it's finally been pushed across the goal line. I gave the kudos to the whole team last month, so there's no more kudos to give. They did actually do their work. They posted the bonds. We have the letters of credit. We have everything we need. And you will see some construction going on out there relatively soon, if it hasn't started already. They anticipate a 10-month construction period, so they hope that they'll be ready by the spring. And that brings us to the rest of the development that is going on in town. Just so you're realizing, Meadowbrook, we always talk about Meads Crossing, you're familiar with that, but Meadowbrook Section 6, which is the last section in Meadowbrook, is queued up at this point in time and ready to go, meaning that it needs to go back to the Planning Commission for some adjustments on some technical things. And the legal documents need to be signed, and we're working on that. But that development will be finished with this Section 6. So we're on the cusp of having that. Apparently, the houses are just flying off the shelf. There's such a demand to live in Tony Town at this point in time that, you know, that's great for us. And then the last thing I want to talk about is that you're all aware, because I sent you all an email on this, and there was an article in the newspaper, but I want to say it as part of our meeting, kind of to bring closure for our entire team, that the Davis matter that involved Mr. Davis running his truck into City Hall and causing the damage and disruption to our city and the loss of everybody's kind of comfort and personal space in the City Hall, that matter was brought to sentence last week. And while the newspaper article did highlight some of the testimony, you know, I wanted to personally give some of the unsung heroes kudos at this point in time. Of course, at the trial, we had the mayor there to support us. We had Jacob, who gave a victim impact statement. We had Joe, Councilman Vigliotti, who you all authorized to speak for the city, and he did that. And we'll get back to him in a second. But the prosecutor in the matter, the actual prosecutor, was Kara Friedman from the State's Attorney's Office. And she did a wonderful job actually pursuing the matter on behalf of the city. And what I expressed to her on behalf of all of you and all of our team is that we so appreciate that she took the matter seriously, because we all see social media, we all hear people on the streets, and, you know, they complain about the water bill and things like that. And I'm sure none of them actually condone this, no matter what their tone is. But it felt great to have somebody actually be in our corner and push this. And they did do that. And of course, Kara couldn't have done that without the support and guidance of the State's Attorney, Brian DeLeonardo. So he and his office were there. It is important to recognize that the State's Attorney, Ryan DeLeonardo, took time out of his day to come and sit in the sentencing. That's how important it was to him to be there. So when you see him, you need to offer him kudos. And certainly, we need to remember them on our list when we have our ribbon cutting for the new town hall. Those were the players that were out on the front screen, but there were players behind the screen. And I'm not going to mention names, because, you know, I talked to them about their experiences and this, but they're your employees, okay? The seats you see every day. They took the time and had to kind of, you know, really muster the courage to talk to me about the incident, so I could get the facts and pass them on to Joe and things like that. So you need to talk to your employees about it and realize that while this chapter is over, for our employees, this will never be over, okay? It'll fade with time. But even merely going back into town hall, as beautiful as the City Manager describes it, is full of trepidation. And you need to really support our team on that. So those words, I can't possibly compete with the eloquence that Councilman Vigliotti had at the trial. The way, not the trial, the sentencing, the way the sentencing goes is the defendant comes in, he sits at the table, his counselor, his attorney there, is able to speak first. And he speaks on all the reasons that this might have happened and all the things that have been done in treatment, all the things and good things about the defendant. And then the State's Attorney gets to go and say, well, these are the things that the state wants, the penitentiary, and, you know, all the things that you would think, that this is disruptive. All of that's well and good, because it's outsiders, right? It's third parties talking about it. The impact statements that are read by our people were really what moves the court. And so I wanted to take a couple of minutes with your permission, I wanted Councilman Vigliotti to read his statement so that all of us can hear it and it can be memorialized, because for me, it felt like it was us talking through him. So if that's okay with the group, I'd like Councilman Vigliotti to read your statement, if you could pull it out from somewhere and do that.
Just real quick before I begin, I just want to say, you know, in all these thanks that are being given, Jay, you are deserving of thanks as well. You helped to guide us through this. You helped us every step of the way. And once again, you've demonstrated how invaluable you are to the city of Tony Town. So thank you for everything that you did as well.
Well, thank you very much for that.
So this is the statement that I delivered on behalf of the city. "Your Honor, I appreciate and thank the court for the opportunity to express the position of the city of Tony Town in this matter. The attack on City Hall late last summer was both traumatic and transformational in a number of ways. I will not dwell on the financial cost of the attack or the burden it has placed on taxpayers. Those numbers are before the court. I will not go on at length about the numerous security additions or deterrent architecture we have required. These are quite clear. I will, however, focus on the human aspect and personal price paid that August day. Our small-town administration, a kind of family of professionals, if you will, was rocked and changed forever by the actions of Mr. Davis. I was on scene in the moments after the attack, along with the mayor, doing my best to help in whatever small way that I could amid the Russia policemen, first responders, and city utility crewmen. I listened to and helped share news of the attack with other city officials and employees not present and listened to one of the women who worked in the area destroyed by Mr. Davis crying uncontrollably. Indeed, the areas destroyed by Mr. Davis, the lobby and the front office, were so totally wrecked that little was recognizable. Wooden desks were reduced to splinters. Equipment was broken into pieces. Walls disappeared. This, Your Honor, is an area used daily by no less than three women and is the place where directors and employees regularly congregate to do the business of the city, and citizens arrive to ask questions, pay bills, or simply say hello. As the court knows, only moments before Mr. Davis attacked City Hall, our IT department assistant was present in the lobby and could have been killed. The court knows as well that had I spoken to Mr. Davis even an hour earlier, no fewer than three human beings could have been in that front office. Since the attack, for over a year, the daily operations of the city have been scattered in three separate buildings, including the Police Department. As without City Hall, there is no central place for these particular activities to occur. Copies, signing documents, delivery of papers, and more no longer take a few steps, but half an hour in some cases. The city's inability to quickly handle such things has frustrated our citizens, delaying timely services and responses to the people that we serve. Soon, Your Honor, City Hall will reopen, rebuild, and refinish, but the memory of what happened lingers with those who work for the city. They are angry. They are angry that this sort of thing could have happened to the place they work. They feel violated, because the place they thought was safe to serve the public was smashed into pieces by a member of the public. These are not elected officials, Your Honor. When you are an elected official, you expect criticism and slander and unjust opinions, for it comes with the job, but not when you are a receptionist, for example. You work quietly, making sure day-to-day operations and services of the city are completed. You do not expect your workplace to be a target for violence, especially in a small town like ours. But Mr. Davis has irrevocably taken away that sense of security. The human beings who work in that office and beyond now express fear, no matter who they are dealing with. They express nervousness and jumpiness. They worry about confrontational citizens becoming violent. It's happened once, and it could easily happen again at City Hall or in any city office. On social media, there were callous commenters who expressed sympathy or encouraged Mr. Davis for having committed his attack. Though they are not elected, our employees are often the face of the city, for they constantly deal with the public and are easily recognizable. The employees now worry that they could be assaulted anywhere, at any time, after the attack on City Hall. They've been unable to sleep or feel safe even in their own homes. They've all taken advantage, multiple times, of counseling services contracted by the city, but it is not enough. They know they will have to return to City Hall full-time. In the meantime, they have had to stop by City Hall for one reason or another. They all saw the damage. They all saw the wreckage. To this day, they explain that they can smell the acrid scents of burnt rubber, the metallic oily waft of the truck engine. They saw skid marks from tires where Mr. Davis ripped apart the places where they sat, worked, and kept small personal mementos from their personal lives, such as family photos. And this is also what matters, Your Honor. These are not nameless, faceless bureaucrats. These are wonderful, kind, gentle, professional individuals who entered municipal administration to help and to serve. These are human beings who love and are loved. They have their own hopes and dreams and lives outside of the city's operations. They have family and friends who are now terrified for them. This attack has additionally changed things for myself in my service as a city councilman. While one expects disagreement and even disrespect when holding elected office, one does not expect violence or to be told that violence would shortly be coming. It chilled me, Your Honor, to hear Mr. Davis laugh about what he was going to do, that it was as simple as using his truck as a weapon to launch an attack in the city that I serve. Like those administrative members of our organization, I too worry about encounters with angered residents now. I no longer take meetings with constituents without telling someone where I'm going to be or without an estimate of how long I may be if this meeting is not in a public place. But such are the times and circumstances in which we live. With violence against institutions elsewhere in the state and country ongoing, it is important to stand against violence. to stand against violence here. Although Mr. Davis's attack may have occurred, may have occurred before and independently of our current events, what happens here today will still set an example in perpetuity as it regards respect for fellow human safety and institutions, forming a part of an unfolding effort in which law and order defended still matter for the sake of true justice. We want justice to be done. Thank you, Your Honor, for the opportunity to submit these simple words on behalf of the city of Tawny Town.
That's it. That was, thank you for sharing that. You know, that was very moving for the court. The judge referenced that in his opinion in his sentence. Also, at that time, Jacob, our IT guy, I mean, he really was personally affected by this, because he was in the building, you know? If anybody was under attack, it was him, and the first-degree assault charge was really an assault on him. And so he prepared an awesome statement as well, from a very personal level, and I really didn't think it was appropriate that we read that tonight. It was very emotional and very difficult for him and for all of us to hear. So I want you to know that he did do an awesome job in representing us, and if he wants to share his statement with you, I'm sure that you could talk to him about doing that. So aside from that piece of closure, the other thing is that when Mr. Davis gets out of jail, he will be on probation, and as a condition of that probation, along with lots of other things that go with probation, he must pay the city back restitution, fifty-one thousand and some dollars. And when you think about the damage that was done to the city, just bricks and mortar damage, that doesn't really come close, but how we calculated that was we had to use the insurance adjuster's estimate, and we've all dealt with insurance claims, and you realize that what that's like, you know, it's not building the thing back the way it was. So we had to use that estimate, and then we were able to collect the cost, obviously, of like the plywood and the public works time and things like that. So it was important that you know, and that our citizens know, that we were made whole by the court in a way that they could do that, and that we will eventually receive reparations for what was done. So that was a big month, and I thank you all for your support. It, if any positives came out of this, it made me, and you should realize that our team, Tawny Town, really did shine as a unit, and it was something to be proud of, to be together with you guys. So thank you. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gallow on his report? All right, very good. I'll speak very briefly. I think Jay did a great job of pointing out everyone that deserves recognition for what they did in attending the hearing, in supporting the city of Tawny Town, and in making their statements. Councilman Vigliotti, your statement was on point all the way through. As I sat there, listening to your statement and the statement from Jacob, it really did give you goosebumps, as you sit there and recount the day, and just remember everything that was going on. It, I think, made a tremendous impact on the sentencing that came forward. So thank you so much for the bravery from you and from Jacob as well. He's not obviously with us this evening, but it was extremely brave for the both of you to go up and make those statements, and I appreciate it, especially doing so eloquently and representing us the best that you possibly could. So personally, I thank you so much for doing that. I couldn't imagine better people to have gone up there. And Jay, the work you put into this, keeping us all informed, staying on top of it, this is why we have the best city attorney in the state of Maryland, and that's why you got your Lifetime Achievement Award.
Thank you very much.
You're above and beyond, and I appreciate that every day. With that, hopefully, the, the court side of that matter can be closed, we can be done with it. As they mentioned, there are still lingering effects that we're going to be dealing with, and I encourage you, as you see city employees, especially those in the front office, you please offer your support to them. It's not going to be the easiest day when they come in, but they know that, you know, part of their job is being a city hall to, to help our residents. So you just offer them support, you know, a quick email, really would go a long way for them. They're a great bunch of people we have working here in City Hall and at the Annex, and even at the Police Department, and they all deserve our unwavering support, and I think they earn it every single day. With that, any questions for Mr. Gallow? There were none? We're all satisfied? Very good. Going into new business, if the council will agree, I do want to change the order. We do have Chief Etzer with us. As of right now, his topic is the final topic, and I don't think it's fair to keep him sitting through all these other things, so with your permission, counsel, I would like to move him to the first item of new business. So are there any objections from the council? Everyone's good? Very good. With that, I'm going to ask the chief to kind of give us the 30,000-foot view of his 12-hour shift proposal, and I believe everyone received this in their email, and we'll go from there. Chief Etzer, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I was hoping you'd take me for last, best for last, you know? This is fine, too. So I don't know, did everyone get to read the memo? Okay. So one of the things I've been trying to do since I've taken over and everything is come up with a good schedule that's not only keeps the morale up with the officers, but also provides the best service to the community. We had currently been working 10-hour shifts back in March. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we went to 12-hour shifts. Everyone has liked that so far, and continues to like it, and I would like to move the department to the 12-hour shifts. However, this creates a, a financial problem, and we'll get into that. If anybody has any questions while I'm going along, just stop me or raise your hand or something, and I can explain. The, so the 12-hour shifts create an 84-hour work week, is what it does. It's 104 extra hours per officer per year. Right now, we are paying the officers overtime with the COVID relief money. That is good until the end of the, the end of December. Starting the new year, we will not have the funds to do that, currently budgeted. One of the things the 12-hour shifts does is it alleviates the problems we've had in the past with the overlapping 10-hour shifts. It takes more, more shifts on the 10-hour shifts to cover a 24-hour period. As soon as my three recruits get out of field training and they hit the street, this will also alleviate that some, too, and it allows, it allows me to schedule everyone so that there's sufficient time for people to take off also. That was very hard on 10-hour shifts. I mean, sometime we've had to, over the years, when we've been short and stuff, we've had to pay overtime to cover shifts when, when people are out and everything. So that, the, but it boils down to, it boils down to the extra four hours being paid. Now, larger departments will sometimes use leave or something to accommodate those four hours. I don't believe that'll work with us. We only have, we would currently run, we would run two six-man squads, and it'd be, it'd be very hard to give them more leave and still do the things that we need to do. Along with that, the other part of the proposal was to pay time and a half for holidays. So they, they currently receive their days off. Those days off would actually be scheduled into the schedule of the 12-hour shifts, and in, in addition to the extra four hours, I'd like to pay time and a half for the holidays, for those folks that would work on the holiday. The guys that were off, they'd be off. The six that would have to work on a holiday, they would get paid the time and a half compensation for that. That's, that's that, that part of it. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, just to clarify real quick, regarding holidays currently with our Police Department, the holidays typically city employees have off, which, you know, it typically is on a Monday, things like, you know, Columbus Day, whatever it is, the police use as a floating holiday. So currently, you know, they'll pick a different day to have off instead of, instead of that particular day. They're the only department in the city that does that. In the new situation that the chief is presenting, those who work that day would get time and a half, everyone else would be off that day, and that's the end of it. There's not a floating holiday, there's nothing, it kind of simplifies things. They don't get any extra days off for it, they're off on the holiday, those who work get the time and a half holiday pay for that. Does that kind of clear that up, chief?
Yeah. And one of the other things the 12-hour schedule does is it makes it a whole lot easier to do the schedule. Done the schedule for about 12 years now, and with the 10-hour shifts and the staggered start times and everything to cover the 24 hours, every time somebody would take off, we'd have to move people. With this, we're not going to, with this, we're not going to do it that way. We're going to have a mid-shift, that guy's going to be on the bubble, he would be the one that moves, and he would know that in advance. The other thing with 12-hour shifts, pretty much once we start that rotation, they would know their schedule for a year out or more indefinitely, basically, unless something would change with manpower or something to that effect.
Very good. Before he continues, are there any questions from the council so far, from what you've heard or read? Very good. Chief, do you wish to continue?
The other, the other thing I want to talk to you about again is the vacation leave. Unfortunately, I'm here asking again for the possibility of a buyout for vacation leave. We did not expect, I did not expect, and I don't think anybody else did, for the COVID-19 pandemic to happen back in March. I was forced to suspend leave until just recently here, I've started allowing some leave. I also have three guys in field training right now, those field training officers, and those three gentlemen cannot take leave during field training, because it's a requirement from MPCTC about the amount of hours that they need to do for field training. When they get out in mid-October, that'll leave approximately two months for people to get leave in, and I don't think it's going to happen. It's, we're going to do our best to get as much leave in between now and the end of the year. The figure I gave you for the buyout was as of September 1st, when everything wasn't scheduled, whoever had a time scheduled already. And along with the 12, along with that, you saw the two different numbers. One of the other requests I wanted was to, if we were to go to the 12-hour shifts, I'd like the Police Department officers at least to be able to carry over 96 hours instead of the 80 hours that they can currently carry over leave every year. And that would actually bring that number down some also. That's, that's about all I have. If you have any questions about that, I can answer them, too.
Very good. I'd like, I'd like to hear some discussion from the council regarding this proposal, any questions you have, concerns. Obviously, there is a rather significant fiscal note attached to this, not just for our current budget year, but looking to the future. In addition to, we'll be treating, Police Department, as a department in the city, has always been treated differently. It's kind of a different animal, but at the same time, realize that we are making very specific exceptions for a department within the city, and we need to understand any ramifications that that may have from other employees as well. Any questions, comments, anything like that from the council? Councilman Vigliotti?
Good evening, chief. Thank you for being with us tonight. I was wondering if you could go into a little bit of detail on how the current use of 12-hour shifts has affected our officers, their morale, their, their, you know, efficiency on the job, whether or not it has had, it has had a net positive effect or not?
I can tell you it's had a positive effect on everyone. We had a departmental meeting back in June, and this was, this was brought up, because I kind of wanted it to be a group thing, it wasn't going to be just a decision I made to go to this. Everyone was in favor of going to the 12-hour shifts. It, it cleans everything up with the, schedule-wise. There'll now only be three different shifts they work, and the biggest thing, you know, with morale is being able to take time off and spend with family also. This is also going to enable me to put more guys on the street, though, too, at, at the peak hours and stuff, where we need to. As you, as you know, I mean, there has been times in the past where we only have one officer on, and one of my goals was to not ever let that happen again, and this will assist with this.
Very good. Thank you, councilman. Anyone else have any words, positive, negative, concerns? I'll take anything at this point. How does this first hit you?
I, I don't have an opinion, but I'd like to give you my, some background, so you can at least hear how this meshes up. The chief and I have worked on this, not, not as much as he has, but we have discussed this, and there are several aspects that we had to work out, and the chief did, with the Fair Labor Standards Act. That requires a certain amount of pay and a certain amount of overtime for hours, and it's, there's an exception, Carthage Garcia rule, for firefighters and police officers. So the chief's proposal works out to be compliant with Fair Labor Standard as far as the shift work, and we still have to do a little bit more, just to make sure that we're not having any problems when we start dealing with the vacation overtime pay. But all in all, it does have a foundation that we can move forward on. One of the things that I asked the, the chief and the mayor is that Pino Legit provides us with an employment hotline when we have questions related to employment law, and so one of the things, after you got understanding of this, if this was something you wanted head in that direction, I told the chief I wanted to run it by Legit's employment lawyers, which you know is Kevin Karpinski, just to make sure that there isn't going to be a problem down the line. The issue, if, you know, to spell it out, is if we implement a policy that would have violated Fair Labor Standards, at some time in the future, there could be a complaint or a lawsuit or an action by employees saying, this violates Fair Labor Standards, and you owe me all the retroactive things that you would have paid. So we just want to make sure that's done, but the chief has been on solid ground and really has worked hard to make sure this is workable and compliant with FLSA.
Thank you, Mr. Gallow. We're not the only department looking at this. I know that Westminster City, they just moved over to 12-hour shifts. I believe the Sheriff's Department has been on 12-hour shifts for quite some time, and this is kind of a trend we're starting to see more and more, as police departments are better able to focus their efforts by working the 12-hour shifts. It gives the officers more days off between shifts, kind of helps them regroup, spend time with their family, then come back on, and they find, you know, once they're in, you know, instead of doing, you know, eight hours, you're back out again, the 12 hours are kind of getting into the swing, they can really do, I think, better enforcement and get more rest on the off days, in that note. So we're not the only ones looking at this. I do want to point out, keep in mind, Councilman Vigliotti fought hard for this budget, trying to get an extra officer. We deferred it possibly to next year. Keep in mind, if we do this, we're looking to add $56,000 to their budget for next year, and how that's going to impact the idea of adding another officer as well, because you're looking at probably another $60,000 plus for another police officer as well. So keep that in mind. I just want to throw that out there, so we're thinking for the future. I'm going to put each of you on the spot real quick. Councilman Vigliotti, I'm going to come back to you if you would. I just want to hear some initial thoughts from each. Councilman Haynes, do you have any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, you kind of hit on that already. My initial concern really was just the cost, because we were, as you said earlier in the air, trying to swing an additional officer. So my only question really is, chief, if you feel like this will be sustainable, should we have to push off adding another officer another year? So if we can't do it in 2021, we have to look at 22 or even 23. With this in place, do you think the department would be better off?
Yes, I, I believe that the 12-hour shifts is going to, we need to do that. That's going to, that's going to set the groundwork for anybody we would add in the future. You know, manpower's always a thing. The, the 10-hour shift does not allow for adequate manpower at certain times, whereas the 12-hours do, so I believe we could do that, yes.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's really all I have.
Perfect. On that note, keep in mind, we are in the middle of census time, and in the next several months, we're going to start finding out exactly how many people are in our fine city. And when it comes to our adequate facilities ordinance, that may push us towards adding more police officers, depending on where those numbers come out. There are other discussions for us to have regarding our adequate facilities ordinance that we'll have at a later date, but just keep in mind, depending on where the census comes, we do have that ordinance that guides us to how many officers we should have in our department. So it's a very good point. This would, I think, kind of help limp us along before having to add another officer by Um, by no, after talking to the chief, he would still prefer to have someone, you know, in the wings at the ready to go, uh, as soon as we make that possible. Um, Councilman Hale, do you have any thoughts, opinions, concerns, general inquiries? Or you could just leave the meeting. That's fine, too. Chief, look what you've done. We'll wait until he logs back on again. Uh, Councilwoman Fuller, do you have anything for us?
Terrible. He really didn't wanna talk, did he?
Who didn't? We have angered him to a point.
Um, and again, I think my concern was gonna be budgetary as well. I, I don't, I, I understand the need and, and, and wanna see the police department doing what they need to do, but I don't want it to come back around to budget time next year where we can't take care of the other employees. We've, we've put them off too long as well, you know. So a, as long as we keep that in mind, um, you know, I, I, I can't see any other issues with it.
Very good. All right. Councilman Hale, we're gonna try this again.
Thanks, sir. Sorry for that. I just had to go away for a minute. Chief, I, I like the idea that 12-hour shifts always had. I just wanted to say that I, to, to the, um, rest of the council and you, Mr. Mayor, that the, um, Adequate Facilities Act, I, I don't want this to be any part of, that's a totally different decision. Um, when the census does come out, I wanna keep, keep, I don't wanna go back, backwards with our, um, staffing of the police department. So the $56,000, it's a good bit of money. Um, but, uh, if it's gonna make, uh, your, your job easier, the officers safer, as well as our city, that's good money spent.
All right. Thank you, councilman. And finally, Mayor Partem Foster, I, I would like to hear your thoughts and opinions.
Um, chief, you mentioned that, um, it was practically impossible to get, um, the leave schedule from now until, I guess, the end of the year. Have you done any sort of spreadsheet to attempt to do this?
So we're, the schedule's constantly moving. Um, I was waiting, you know, just till, just recently, till things got better with, uh, COVID and everything. I've started freeing up. I've allowed them to take their floating holidays. Over the last three months, we had, we had some of them stacked up because they weren't allowed to take them either for a little while. So I had to get them in first because obviously they lose those. Um, and now they're, now they're opening up and starting to schedule leave. So we will have two months. That's a big, those are two big months when people take leave anyway. Um, and we will get as much scheduled as we can.
So that figure that you're asking, uh, for could be lower?
Yeah, it'll come down. Just, uh, we did this last year. It came, it came down. And I just gave you the maximum it would be under. And the reason I gave you the two figures, if you allow me to carry, or allow them to carry over the 96 hours instead of the 80, that'll also bring that number down. And the thought behind that was they will now have to take, when they do take their time, they'll take 12 hours instead of 10 hours.
My only other concern is the carrying over of 96 hours. How will we, um, compensate the rest of the city employees? Will we allow them to carry over more? Maybe not 96, but...
Um, I'm not, I'm gonna defer to Jim on that or whatever, but the, the reason for the 90, the reason for the 96 hours is for them, for the police department to take off the same, from the same Monday to the next Monday, or, or whatever, whatever period of seven days they wanna take off, they would use 40 hours. Our guys are gonna have to use 48 hours. So that's, that was the only reason I added the 16, and I thought it would alleviate the, alleviate some of the cost also.
And I believe before Mr. Weprick jumps in, I, I think there's a difference in how the pandemic affected employees' abilities to take time off. Um, obviously, certain employees, Mr. Weprick especially, was not able to take a lot of time off. Um, he still has significant comp time that he has built up. Um, but I'll let him kinda speak to how time off has been used by other employees in the city.
Generally, other departments have not run into the same issues as, as the police department. Obviously, we, we need to provide coverage for police services 24/7. Um, and with our, our staffing issues of, of late, um, that's been very difficult. Um, you know, the chief's been trying to schedule things, um, so that we have adequate coverage. And to do that, the guys simply can't take off. Um, the chief and I have talked a good bit about the 12-hour shifts. It really does sound to me like, you know, this will assist with being able to better schedule the, the officers, um, have at least two officers on every shift so we don't have to have an officer working solo again, and also enabling them to, to schedule vacation time, um, in a more reasonable way so that hopefully they will be able to use it. Um, and we won't have to continue coming back to council to carry over in the future. Um, with the 10-hour shifts, as the chief said, to schedule one person off, you've gotta move a number of other people to maintain adequate coverage. So the 12-hours gets us away from that. Getting back to the other departments and, and vacation carryover, we really don't see the same issues with other departments because they're not, we're not staffing Parks and Rec or Public Works or Finance 24/7. So we don't, we don't have those same challenges. Certainly, Public Works, you know, we do have somebody here every day, you know, for at least part days, you know, through the weekends, you know, running around all the wells and pumps daily. So it's not, it's not as though the police are the only seven-day-a-week department, but they're the only 24/7 department. So they have a lot, a lot more to worry with and to work out schedule-wise than the other departments. And I have touched base with Public Works, for example, because that's the next, you know, department with a number of employees. And they are on schedule to be able to, you know, have the guys use the rest of their vacation time without having to carry over. Um, they do have a lot of employees who save up their, uh, their leave for, um, for the end of the year, uh, you know, be it hunting season or holidays. And, um, the director is able to schedule, you know, that accordingly and, and have adequate coverage. So we're really not seeing the issues citywide. It's really, um, it's just been a challenge in the police department. And of course, as, uh, the mayor said, for myself in the current situation, but, um, you know, generally, I'm able to use my leave as well. Um, right now, until we hire, uh, some new folks, um, that's gonna be difficult. So, um, while I am not comfortable asking for things for myself, I will ask that you extend, uh, paying out of leave to myself as well, because I am kind of in that situation where due to, um, current circumstances, I haven't been able to take time off. And I certainly intend to use up as much of my, uh, comp time as possible by the end of the year. Um, at which time, I'm gonna propose that I forfeit the, um, remaining comp hours beyond 40. And I can get you some details on that for Monday night. So anyhow, that's, uh, kinda the quick citywide look.
All right. Well, that's a discussion that we're gonna have another time, uh, Jim, for sure. Um, the, there's a few unknowns that, that we're looking at. And this is really looking at it from a budgetary standpoint. First off, uh, obviously with the census, you know, not knowing what kind of numbers we're gonna get from that, we've had some amazing success with the building in Meadowbrook and Meads Crossing, which of course, we're looking at potentially some decent revenue streams from that. At the same time, we don't know when the pandemic economic struggle is going to hit the city. Um, you're looking at income tax revenue, which of course, for us, is not a huge amount. Uh, our biggest revenue stream is from property taxes, but we don't know exactly when it's going to hit. Um, I know the treasurer said she's expecting in the next fiscal year to really kinda see more of the impact of that, but that's something we need to keep in mind. Um, I've talked to the chief. I think going 12-hour shifts is the best thing for the city and for the department. Uh, it seems that the officers operate better under 12-hour shifts. I think the city is better protected with 12-hour shifts. Um, but at the same time, you know, from the fiscal side, there are a lot of unknowns and unexpected, you know. We, no one saw COVID-19 coming. 2020's been a crap year. We don't know what 2021's gonna bring. Um, and it's, you, you start to, to try to plan for the worst-case scenario. Uh, so those are the things I just wanna throw out to you. Um, there are the unknowns we need to consider, but at the same time, we need to consider the effect that doing this is gonna have positively for the residents, uh, in the city as well as our police officers. With that, I'm gonna give one final chance for questions or comments. Councilman Bigliotti, I forgot to come back to you. Go ahead. It is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and no worries at all. I want to express my, uh, support for the 12-hour proposal as well. Um, you know, to, to the points that have been echoed so far, you know, we know we do have new developments that are being finished out. We knew, we, uh, you know, as Jay said, we have a number of houses that are being built very quickly. Um, you know, that means more citizens. That means more areas to cover. That means more roads that have to be patrolled. And so, um, you know, to the chief's point, you know, having more officers on duty, it's almost as if, you know, even though we may not be able to have necessarily more officers in the department overall, we'll have more officers on the street at any given time to be able to handle any number of issues that might arise in addition to what we normally experience. And if the concern is making sure that we are fiscally able to proceed at this point, um, uh, you know, beyond, uh, the 12-hour shift proposal into future budgetary years about, you know, with respect to hiring additional officers, you know, the fact that we can have more officers on duty at any given time is gonna help compensate for the, for the, I guess, the, the manpower issues overall. And, uh, you know, the, the final two things, points that I'll make very quickly is that, uh, you know, dynamics are certainly changing. As the mayor had, uh, you know, very astutely pointed out, um, other departments throughout the state are moving over to 12-hour shifts because it improves the morale of the officers. It allows them to more capably do their job. And as the mayor said, it allows them to focus specifically on what they're doing at any given time in a much better way than they already do. Um, you know, and in addition to that, I know that, uh, I know that over the past couple of years, we have, uh, in some circumstances, you know, set our sights on paying down some of the debts that we've accrued in the past. Uh, and I know that our objective has always been to try to, you know, dispense with the loans that we've had to take out for various issues in the past. Uh, but if we are in a situation where there are fiscal difficulties in coming years, uh, you know, possibilities of loans or grants or alternative means of funding are always, you know, not guaranteed, but there are possible avenues that we could explore to help to, to, um, to help to accommodate any difficulties that we do face. And I just wanted to, uh, to put that out there. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councilman. Uh, with that, this will come up before you Monday evening. Uh, we would like, uh, a decision from the council regarding whether you wanna move forward with this. Um, and at the end of this topic, chief, thank you so much for spending your evening with us. And you are excused to sign off and go home and enjoy the night, okay?
Thank you. I'll have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna go back to the order of new business now. Going up to our fin, uh, monthly financial report. Are there any questions from the council on the financial report? All right. Everyone is satisfied. We'll move into accounts payables. Any questions or concerns regarding the accounts payables this month? All right. I see heads moving. Well, perfect. Then we will move into award of contract for the Tonnentown High School Park Playground. Uh, you see in your binder from Lorena, our Parks and Rec Director. Uh, the bid opening for this was great. We had seven responses for this bid. And I remember just a couple of years ago where we directed the Parks, uh, Parks and Rec Director to put it out for another bid because we only had one response. Um, this was great. Uh, seven bids. The designs are spectacular. What was really great is how the advisory board worked with Lorena to put it in their wishlist. Uh, and what they wanted to see were more inclusive pieces of equipment uh, for children who maybe are less mobile or, or situations like that. I think it's a great step forward for the city to be more inclusive on those things. Uh, you'll see her description of everything, and the recommendation is to award the contract to playground specialists for $133,499. Um, are there any questions? Obviously, the decision's not for this evening. Uh, are there any questions from the council regarding, uh, this particular bid or the award of contract we're looking for Monday evening? Councilman Bigliotti?
Uh, just two very, uh, quick points. I think it's important to note that, uh, this park, if, and mayor, please correct me if I'm wrong, or Jim, maybe you know, I think this, it's been somewhere between 10 and 15 years since this park has had any upgrades or any improvements, if I'm correct about that. Um, and then...
15 years, yes.
Okay. And, and so I think it's, it's certainly overdue. I mean, I know we get a lot of comments about, well, why can't we expand playgrounds? Or why are we doing this instead of that? So I think it's important that, you know, the public knows that it's been, you know, almost, you know, the better part of, of, you know, a decade and a half since this park has had any, you know, real attention. Um, and then the other interesting thing I noted in, uh, Lorena's report is that the award to playground specialists includes a number of other, uh, issues that we would have, such as removing the, uh, the old playground equipment. So it's good that those things are included, um, you know, as, as she says, having reserved the $10,000 for a separate contractor to remove these things. So I think those are also important to note because, you know, we typically don't think about, you know, removing what's there before installing or, you know, installing what's gonna be new. So I just wanted to, uh, to point that out.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? All right. So Monday evening, the, uh, Mr. Weprick, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sure. I just wanted to take a second and, um, commend Lorena for getting this together so quickly. Um, you may or may not know, the bid opening was just this past Friday. So this is a very quick turnaround to have these reviewed, shared with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Um, get feedback from that board and get it, uh, to you guys in time for the workshop. So, um, just wanted to point that out to everybody. And, um, again, commend Lorena and also the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for the quick response. And really, you know, for a volunteer group, they, they stepped up and took time to review these in a very short window. So just wanted to throw the thanks out there for those guys.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Uh, anything else from council? All right. So Monday evening, uh, we'll be seeking approval of the recommendation from Parks and Rec Director to award that contract. If you have questions in the meantime, I encourage you to reach out to Lorena uh, or to the rest of the council, uh, so we can have them addressed. With that, we do have up in front of council, special event approval. This is a Halloween party at Memorial Park. I believe this is for West Carroll Cheer. Um, are there any questions from the council regarding this application? Councilman Bigliotti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say that I have no particular issue with this, but I do have a question. In the, uh, the, uh, application, it notes that alcohol is going to be, uh, being served. And unless I missed it, and please do correct me if I did, uh, if I did miss it. Um, I know that there's gonna, you know, the, obviously, the football field itself is surrounded by a fence. But I believe we had an ordinance dating back some years ago that where alcohol is being served, that area in specific has to have a fence around it or some kind of barrier that separates that area from everybody else. And, and again, unless I've missed it, I don't see something like that on here if, if that's necessary for this in particular. And Jay, maybe, maybe you could speak to that as well.
Well, the, the ordinance that you're speaking of, it requires that the alcohol-serving area be separate from the park as a whole. Um, the football field being fenced in does qualify. That's how we do our wine festival in the football field without having any additional fencing involved. Um, so their use of that means they don't have to put up any additional fencing. Um, and it does qualify, or it does, uh, it does go with the ordinance that you were speaking of, where we do require fencing that separates alcohol from the rest of the park. Um, anything, is that correct as far as you know, Mr. Weprick, Mr. Gallow? We're correct? Okay. Very good. Um, anything else? Yep. Very good. Any other comments, questions, concerns, general inquiries? No? Very good. It's nice to see events starting to pop up again. Obviously, they're, uh, they're aware of the restrictions and precautions that they're required to take, but we're starting to see some sort of, uh, maybe normalcy coming back. But we're starting to see some sort of, maybe normalcy coming back to us again. That's exciting to see. So that will be up for approval Monday evening. Next, a very, what I think is a very exciting thing, Carroll County Board of Election ballot drop box placement. It was asked of us if we would consider having a drop box for ballots for this election season. I'm very excited at the prospect of us doing so. I think it's a great service for the residents of our city to be able to drop their ballots in a box nearby. The proposed location is at the police department where it is under video surveillance. But with that, I just will let you, I'm extremely excited. I'm going to let Mr. Gallow talk a little more about it now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me disclose that I am also the attorney for the Carroll County Election Board. So in that, there is a conflict, although I don't think the conflict is, is that great here because we're just talking about a ballot box location. And to continue with our conflicts, our mayor pro tem's husband, Sam Foster, is also on the Carroll County Election Board. So you all know who you're dealing with. But that being said, the mayor summarized the proposal. You're all very familiar from the, the primary election about the drop boxes, what they look like, and how people bring their ballots and drop them in there. And the election board during their discussions, and Mr. Foster stated that where they were proposing these drop boxes, there was none in the northern area of the county, which means the people would either have to mail them in, drive them in, or vote in person. So it was decided by the board and it was approved by the State Board of Elections because they have to approve that too, that Tawny Town would be okay to put one at. They want to do it at the police station. If you're looking at the police station, so you're imagining with me, you're looking at the front door, it would be on the right-hand side of the front wall, okay, on the outside. So it'd be right there where you could pull in and park, drop your drop, your ballot in. The important part is it's covered by the video camera. The city has no obligations whatsoever except to put that there. So we're going to let them put it there. They put it there. It needs to be in a location that's covered by our video camera. It will. We talked with the IT department and with the police, and they said, no problem. They can even archive the videos for the 30 days that it would be there or whatever it is so that if there's an issue, that they can go back on that. We don't have to do anything. We don't have to service it, obviously. We'll talk to the staff inside the police department because I'm sure somebody will roll in with their ballot instead of going to the drop box, but they'll be just be instructed to where to take it. And the only thing that we would have to do as a police agency, because we are the police agency with the jurisdiction, is if people start electioneering near the box and somebody calls the police, we would be the ones that would respond, which we would anyway. So there's going to be an MOU to that effect. The election board, election director is going to sign it. And then we're going to get the mayor to sign after on Monday if you agree to do this. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Very good. I do want to thank Sam Foster, Diane's husband, for his efforts in getting us into this. It's such an important thing that we have the elections as accessible as possible to every single voter. And this takes us one step closer to that. Mayor Pro Tem Foster, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to ask Jay, on the MOU, the number five, I think there's a typo where it says, however, the city takes to responsibility, it should be the responsibility. And, and number six, the board agrees to indemnify and save harmless, should that be hold harmless?
Yeah, it can be hold harmless, right.
Okay, I never saw a save. I didn't know.
Right. And I think, Claire, you have those down so you can maybe make those changes for Monday. That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilman Vigliotti, I believe you have a hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, just a brief, I guess, general kind of a question. So is it going to be the Board of Election, I guess, it would come to pick up the ballots as they're dropped off? And how often are they going to be doing pickups of the ballots?
The plan right now is, it's not firm. So this is the tentative plan, is that the board members, so not the, the board members of the Board of Election, like Mr. Foster and his colleagues, will be the ones that pick up the ballots in bipartisan teams, so Republican and a Democrat. And they are going to pick the ballots up twice a day. So there's a whole procedure for it that, you know, I won't need to get into. But twice a day, they will pick the ballots up for the time that they are there. And the times that they are there, they're supposed to come out at the end of September until Election Day. And then they close, you know, the Election Day, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Very good. Mr. Weeper, from a staff point of view, do you have any concerns or anything regarding this?
No, everything's been covered to my satisfaction.
Great. Thank you, sir. With that, that will be up for your approval on Monday evening. And I look forward to having the drop box here in our city. Next up is the park impact fee. I believe this is just kind of up for general discussion. I think I'm going to give it to Mr. Weeper because I haven't seen a whole lot of information about this yet myself.
Sure. We hope to be bringing a draft ordinance before you in the not-too-distant future. We've been talking about a park impact fee for many years off and on. As you are aware, we have a fee in lieu of open space requirement currently. So when there is a subdivision plan submitted for residential development, the developer has the opportunity to set aside a certain amount of open space that can be dedicated to the city for, for recreational use. And the, the code does specify that, that this space to be dedicated has to meet certain criteria. It can't be all steep slopes or wetlands or something that's unusable. But more often than not, we see that developers will pay the fee in lieu of dedicating open space. So they currently, for example, the Meadowbrook community has not dedicated open space to the city. And they pay a $1,500 fee in lieu of open space for every house that they build. Meads Crossing did provide open space as required by the subdivision regulations. But they did, in conversations with, with staff and mayor and council, recognize that though they have the appropriate amount of open space, which is going to be maintained by their homeowners association rather than the city, that they will still have an impact on, on our park system. So they have been paying basically a negotiated amount as part of, negotiated through the DARA. So we are collecting something from them. But this is not a true park impact fee because sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't. And all new residential development has some impact on the parks. Even Carroll Vista, where they do have tremendous amenities within the community, still has some impact on the park. Even though they, they have a lot of amenities on site, walking trails, you know, recreation facilities, swimming pools, all that stuff. But even they paid a reduced fee in lieu of open space. So the idea basically is that this would be a fee that is collected for every, every unit and potentially also on commercial industrial development so that it would be something that's charged for all development, whether or not they dedicated the open space. Obviously, the city has not really had a shortage of park acreage. We have kind of the opposite. We have a lot of acreage, but we don't have the funds to really develop it to its potential. So what we're envisioning is basically an impact fee that's going to go for capital projects and improving the parks, developing the parks, and maintaining the fee in lieu of open space as well. And while nothing is, is carved in stone at this point, using that money more towards acquisition. So we have to figure out how to make the two work together. And we're really struggling with coming up with the dollar figure. Lorena has done a lot of research into this over the last couple of months and has basically gone through and come up with a list of amenities currently provided in the parks because the direction that I had given was, okay, we need to come up with a list of all the parks, all the park amenities, the services we provide, the facilities we provide. And that's going to be, that snapshot of where we are now is what's adequate. And we need to come up with a value of that and then a portionate to future growth and determine what the share per household is going to be to maintain that level of amenities in the parks. Well, that figure turns out to be very steep because when you look at amenities, you also need to think about things like parking spaces, lighting, you know, little things that don't really come to mind. I mean, the first things you think of are ball diamonds and football fields and soccer fields and, you know, grandstands. But it costs money to develop parking spaces. It costs money to put lighting in. So there's a lot that went into it. And when we divided that out per household, the figure was something that I would say would be cost prohibitive or discouraging of, for developers to pay. So we don't want to come up with a number that's so high that it discourages building. So we still have a lot to work on with that, but hopefully, we'll get things fine-tuned. And right now, just want to make sure that, that this is something that everybody is on board with. We've, we've talked about it off and on for years. And when we started talking about the MOUs with the sports organizations, the idea came up that, well, some organizations raise more money than others. Some organizations cost the city more money to host them than others. Some organizations use more lighting, for example, or require more field maintenance. Some organizations do self-help grants and contribute money on their own to the upkeep and improvement of the fields. And the idea of trying to come up with some value that we could incorporate into the MOU was discussed. At which point I said, well, I think our time would be better spent coming up with an actual park impact fee. If we're looking at generating revenue for the parks, it would be a more equitable thing to do just to go ahead and do the park impact fee that we've been talking about off and on for I don't know how many years now. So Lorena jumped on it, has done a ton of research and put a lot of effort into coming up with some draft figures. And we're trying to finalize those now and get that before you, hopefully, in the next month or two. So that's, that's the, I guess, 30,000-foot view, maybe a little lower than that, but.
Perfect. I, I think you summed it up nicely. It's something that we're going to see in the very near future, something we need to take very seriously. I think many of us would agree that this is about 10 years too late for us. With the great development we've had, this would have been extremely advantageous. Unfortunately, you know, it's even late to the party. We still have some great projects on the horizon that I think could really help to keep our parks and our amenities what, what we want them to be and what I believe our residents deserve them to be. Are there any comments from the council? Do you agree with going forward with this idea? Or do you think this is a giant waste of, of time? We're good? I saw heads nodding. We're great. I think we're on a good path. Mr. Weeper, thank you for the guidance you gave Lorena on this and definitely the hard work that she's put into it. I know it's, it seems so simple upfront, but it is a very large project to go through those sorts of things. So we'll be looking forward to that. Anything else? Anyone want to throw anything else in before? Nope, we're good on that topic. Very good. With that, I will be seeking a motion to adjourn until Monday evening.
Daryl can have it. I'll second it.
All right, that is the motion to Councilman Hale, the second to Councilwoman Fuller. All in favor of adjourning, signify with your thumbs up. It is unanimous. We are adjourned. Good evening, folks.